Welcome, I'd like to call the July 20th, 2022 meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board to order. Welcome, welcome to the board, thank you for coming tonight, this afternoon. First on our agenda, I could ask our secretary to call our role.
Fred Austin.
Present.
Don Brown.
Present.
Naomi Buck.
Present.
David Davenport.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
RJ Hemby. John Landrin.
Present.
Charles McGlaughlin.
Here.
And Mr. Vice Chairman, we received notice that Madison Downing and Steve Little would not be present.
All right, thank you, Ms. Secretary. Yeah, in the absence of our regular chairman, I'll be the emcee for your show tonight. So first on our agenda tonight, we'll have a Mr. Landrin, if you'll do our prayer tonight, and then we'll go into our pledge of allegiance.
Let us stand and bow our heads in prayer. Father, we come before you this evening, first of all, just say thank you, Lord. Lord, we thank you for all that you've done and all that you will do. Father, rest, did you come with us right now on this short meeting as we get our heads together? Father, help us keep our minds, our bodies, and our whole spirits open, clean, and fair to do those things that you would always do, Lord. And then as we leave, give us some parting wisdom and safety, Father, until we meet again. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on, next on our agenda, approval for the minutes of our meeting back on June the 15th. Those minutes were mailed to you in your packet and emailed as well, I believe, so I'll entertain a motion to approve, if so be.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve in a minute.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second by Mr. Harding. Any discussion, any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes for June 15th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, minutes, approval is approved. Next, we'll open the floor to any public addresses to the board. Any been added? No? Okay. No, no public addresses to the board at this time, so we'll close the board, we'll close the floor for that. So next is a preliminary plan request for the Winfield subdivision located on Poker House Road, and I believe Mr. Bryant's gonna lead us through the discussion of that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have Winfield preliminary plan. This plan is located on Poker House Road, north of its intersection with South Grimesland Bridge Road and the Grimesland Township. There are 49 lots, 36.68 acres. The owner is H&amp;S Land LLC. This is an overview of the location. And a little closer look here, notice the Tar River. This is an overall view of the plan. And we have Poker House Road, the three proposed streets, Winfield Drive, Curlo Court, and Osprey Drive. They have their stub out, open space as required, and their cluster box unit as required. The site is in the Grimesland zoning district, day one, minimum of 15,000 square foot lot size when served by water or sewer. Three new private streets proposed. Electricity is provided by Duke Energy. Water service is provided by Grimesland. School districts are GR Whitfield and DH Conley. Technical review committee has recommended conditional approval. Pitt County Planning, an NC DOT mailbox cluster unit with lighting and shelters required, add parcel number, owner name, fire district information, landscape buffer if any lots are served internally, and add information to the FEMA map panels. Show any environmentally sensitive areas and any drain tunnel on subsequent submittals. The project will require soil and erosion and sedimentation control plan. Pitt County Environmental Health, all lots must meet environmental health requirements. Submitting applications, any detailed soil work that's been performed on the property, any proposed layouts, please submit. A site plan for each lot showing the proposed home location with dimensions and distances to property lines, driveway locations, widths, water line location, any locations of decks, outbuildings, or accretments. Pitt County Emergency Management, if the development is serviced by a six-inch or larger water line, all lots must be within 400 foot of a fire hydrant. Roads and cul-de-sacs must meet requirements for fire service apparatus. The town of Grimesland, a hydraulic analysis will be required. System should be designed to provide fire flow during peak demand. Label and show all water lines, fire hydrants, and water meters on subsequent submittals. Any hydrants not in the right of way must have utility easements. Water lines must wrap around cul-de-sacs, and all connections and junctions need valves. NC DOT, the subdivision must follow NCGS 136102.6. All proposed utilities within the right of way must be five foot or less from the outside edge of the right of way. Curve data must be submitted to ensure roads are designed to NC DOT standards. Length should be shown for any of the 18-inch pipes running under the roadways. NC DOT will provide further comments when lot numbers are revised. All valves must be placed as far as possible from any proposed asphalt. Any proposed dead-end roads must adhere to NC DOT specifications, and NC DOT does not accept any proposed pavement sections without sealed engineer certification. NC DOT will require roadway modifications at the intersection of Poker House Road, Grimesland Bridge Road, to allow for designated left and right turn lanes from Poker House on the Grimesland Bridge Road. This is a view looking north along Poker House Road. And a view of the site currently wooded from Poker House Road. This is a view of the site facing south along Poker House Road. And a view of adjacent property. And again, another view of the adjacent property. Technical review committee has recommended conditional approval. Adjacent property owners have been notified, and staff has received inquiries in regards to the proposed development, request for a copy of the plan, general design of the homes, and improvements along Poker House Road. And questions from the board?
Now, Mr. Bryant, I believe this came up before this board?
Correct.
At our earlier meeting, is that correct?
Correct, the previous meeting, and I'd also like to notice, this is a recent, or just let you know that this is a recent middle, and it did say private street earlier in the presentation, and it is public, just to make that clarification as well. They have reduced the number of lots from 55 to 49, is one of the major changes, and have omitted two streets.
Okay. Now, I don't believe I was at the meeting where it came up before, so I have to rely on some of the other board members. I think there was some question about some stormwater issues.
Yes, sir.
Have they addressed that?
And I believe the engineer here, he can address some of the stormwater concerns. Some of the stormwater concerns were water coming onto Poker House Road, in which we can discuss with NC DOT, since that is their right of way. The modifications would be up to them on how any road water would be handled there in the ditches. We did have our engineering look at the site, and a lot of the water there, at least for about 50% of the site, goes back in to Chicod Creek, and staff could talk with the owner of the land about allowing more drainage to go to that Chicod Creek area. But I'll let him speak a little more to the stormwater and the changes with that point.
All right, so we do have two people here that would like to speak on this subdivision. I'll ask Ms. Tammy Edwards, would you like to, would you like to speak?
Sure, I'll speak myself.
That'll be fine, come right on up. Just state your name and your address, if you would.
Sure. My name's Tammy Edwards, and I live on 105 Poker House Road. My concern earlier was about the stormwater, because I live on the end at the Tar Riverside, and water about halfway, Poker House Road does tend to drain towards my property. I get a lot of runoff, so my concern was the excessive runoff. The second couple of questions I had were concerning construction, when will construction begin? Do they plan on going in and clearcutting all of the vegetation and all the trees, or will they leave some natural, I guess, vegetation to help with management of water? The more vegetation you have, obviously, the better you can manage the water drainage.
Okay.
So those were the, and buffers, are there any guidelines around buffers for subdivisions? I just, I don't know, and I know some subdivisions I see do have buffers.
Okay, we'll try to get those answered. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Edwards before she sits down? Okay, thank you. Next, I've got, I guess, the engineer, Robert Bartlett, is that correct?
Yes, Fred, yes, sir.
All right, just tell me your name, and repeat your name and your address, please, Father.
Yeah, Robert Bartlett, Bartlett Engineering, offices at 1906 Nash Street in Wilson. So, yeah, I guess several things to address, several questions maybe we need to look at. As Mr. Bryant stated, some of the big things are reduced the number of lots and the streets. Some of that was due to wetlands, some buffers, some other things that made it environmentally not able to follow the original plan that was done, at least not feasibly. Some of it with the septic suitability on some of the soils that was determined after that plan. So with the revised layout, it says 49 lots, two of those are open space lots, so there's really 47 lots, residential lots, that was reduced by seven lots from the previous plan. It stated the majority of the water, I think it's more than 50%, the majority of the water flows away from Poker House Road to the tributary to Chicod Creek. So any of the water along Poker House Road that flows Poker House Road towards Tar River, that's obviously going to continue to go that way, but the new streets, the new construction, the majority of that water is going to flow away from Poker House Road. With the revised plan, the open space went from less than two acres to over 12 acres, so increased, added about 10 acres of open space that'll be not in lots, not in development, just, just open space. Some of that certainly within the wetlands and the Tar River buffers will remain in a natural state as required, so that'll take place. Previously, I think it was two months ago when this plan came, and there was questions concerned about stormwater, and at that time, it was, you know, agreed to comply with the Pitt County Stormwater Regulations. As you know, this is in town of Grimesland, which the ordinance specifically exempts it from stormwater regulations. So we just didn't feel it was prudent to necessarily have this comply with something that the ordinance specifically exempts from the ordinance. But nonetheless, with the revised plan, with the amount of streets, and looking at a conservative, I think it was about 37, 3800 square foot of impervious area per residential lot, which feels reasonable, with that overall impervious area on the development, with all that open space we've got, would be less than 15% impervious. So even if we followed stormwater regulations, within the stormwater regulations, we're exempted from peak flow requirements being less than 15% impervious. So in a sense, this plan does comply with the stormwater regulations, but without going through the process of following the stormwater regulations, if that makes sense. So it's gonna meet all the requirements, but we would just don't feel it's necessary or prudent to have it comply with something, as I said, that the ordinance specifically exempts it from. With the TRC conditions of approval, we are in agreement with all of those, understand all of those. The plan currently in front of you, actually, most of that's already addressed, the remaining things will be addressed within the context of the construction plans as they're done, so no issue there. But I guess other than that, any questions you may have, I'll be glad to try and answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions from the board? I do have a question. The septic fields, did you do any preemptive testing of the soil types?
So a soil scientist has been out and evaluated the site completely and mapped those soils for us, and that's, that's how the lot layout that you have in front of you came about. If you'll notice, when you come in on, on the street off of Poker House, the first lot on the right is a big lot, open space lot with a milky eye, that's because those soils basically were not suitable for septic. Then the open space area is not suitable. The remaining areas that are shown as lots, there's, appears to be enough suitable soils on those lots to support the septic systems.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? I guess for Mr. Bryant, with the revised plan, I'm assuming the staff is good with, you know, based on the earlier plan, some of the changes that they've made, are you guys good with your calculations on stormwater?
Yes, sir, staff does recommend conditional approval and agrees with the TRC recommendation.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Hemby, welcome?
Thank you.
You missed the prayer, but we remembered you in it, so.
Thank you, appreciate that, I needed it.
Any questions, Mr. Bryant, or anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove. Anyone want to make a motion here? What was that, Ms. Buck?
Did he approve it?
Okay, Ms. Buck made a motion to approve. Yes, ma'am, I'll hold just a sec.
So did I hear correctly that we are going to follow the more strict stormwater management, or we are not?
They will.
You said a lot of technical stuff, and I appreciate your thorough piece, but are we gonna follow the guidelines, or are we not?
We do not have the ability to hold them to our stormwater regulations, because that jurisdiction is exempt.
I thought in the first meeting we agreed to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think so. I think that was one of the things that we had talked about.
Yeah, I have to admit that the gentleman confused me a little bit on that, that part he was talking about saying that since Grimesland didn't enforce it, that maybe we, I got lost a little bit there, I'm old, so what, what exactly did that mean? So are we saying that, because that was one of the issues we were talking about, and that was something that seemed to satisfy everybody before. So are we saying now that we isn't, we are not going to, not going to follow the NC DOT?
It's my understanding that they did follow the guidelines when they redrew these lots and the streets, just as, you know, as a precursor, but they're not required to do such. That's my understanding of Mr. Bartlett's explanation just a few minutes ago.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll just add, you know, when we dealt with this two months ago, that was a voluntary condition that was added by the agent at that time.
Right.
We cannot require, again, we're in a local agreement with the town of Grimesland, we're administering our subdivision regulations, stormwater regulations don't apply there. We were fortunate that they considered applying those stormwater regulations last time. We believe it's gonna be very close to meeting hours, but we can't require it. Again, with the open space, there may be some other options too. Any of that water that does, the additional stormwater that does come onto the roadside ditch, we will be working with DOT to see if there are any needs for additional improvements along the road, Poker House Road there. So you are correct, we are not at this point, unless he voluntarily does it again tonight, we will not include the stormwater regulations this time.
Mr. Bartlett?
Yes, I apologize if I confused you, but I understand with, with the technical how that could happen, but I'll try to make it a little more simple. So we are not specifically complying with a set of stormwater regulations, because we're exempted as being in Grimesland jurisdiction. However, this revised plan, the runoff that would take place would meet the requirements of Pitt County Stormwater Regulations if it were forced to comply with. So, you know, the, the plan you have before you, the stormwater runoff from it would be complying with Pitt County's stormwater regulations, being 15% impervious or less. But we're exempted, and, you know, we just do not want to have a plan that is going to be required to follow something that the ordinance specifically exempts it from, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
And the main reason for that, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, yes, we meet it so we could meet it, but going through the calculations, showing everything, all of that, it would just be added expense, added everything else to prove that it meets it, when the ordinance says we don't have to do that, if that makes sense.
Does that meet or satisfactory to residents?
As long as they don't wash away my property.
Yeah, so, and it stated.
That's my concern.
The majority of the runoff from the development is going to be going away from Poker House Road to Chicod, well, it doesn't go directly to Chicod Creek, it goes to a tributary to Chicod Creek. You know, there is some water right along the road frontage that has been going, is going, and will continue to go, but, you know, it's, that's a small part of the increase in the development.
Gotcha. That answer your question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Bartlett.
Yes, sir.
If, if you say, if there's, if the average size of the lot is 15,000 square feet, and you have a 15% factor, does that mean that 225 square feet of each lot is impervious? And then more, like when you include the driveway and the roof, that's not 225 square feet?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is that if you look at the entire development, you look at the roadways, the amount of impervious area there, then you take the number of residential lots, and you assign about a 3,800 square feet of impervious area to each lot, then the overall for the whole property would be 15% impervious area.
Okay.
Because, you know, we've, we've got 12 acres of open space.
I understand that.
That has none, and then, of course, each lot, you know, if you got 15,000 square feet, and, you know, less than a third of it in impervious area, then the overall would be the 15, 15%, which is the key number for exemption.
I understand. So there's, so an average of, you've assigned 3,800 square feet to each lot as a projected impervious contribution to impervious.
Yes, in, in talking with staff and, and working through it, and, you know, looking, okay, well, you know, where are we at with stormwater, what's runoff look like, you know, felt that that is a reasonable number, you know, there's, there's nothing that we're saying's gonna limit specifically each lot to that, you know, there may be some more, some less, but, you know, that, that appears to be a reasonable amount of impervious area on a lot, when you look at a rooftop driveway, you know, for, for, for the type of development that'll go there, appears to be a reasonable number, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
If I may?
You can come to the microphone and give me your name and address, if you would.
Marquette Sadler, and it's 185 Poker House Road.
All right.
I apologize for being late, got out of work late, so I probably missed what was said at the beginning of the meeting. The two questions I did have was, I believe, when we looked at the revised plan, it now looks like the entrance to the neighborhood is going to be at the very end of Poker House Road off to the left. I just wanted to confirm that, there's no longer a entrance off of Poker House at the beginning and one at the end. And then number two, is it possible that they are gonna keep any of the area wooded, or is all that area going to be, all the wooded area gonna be demolished? Those were my two questions.
Okay.
Oh, one other, and what is the soonest expected date that this new neighborhood would start being built, once everything is approved? Sorry. Three questions.
Okay. Mr. Bartlett, can you address that?
Yeah, I'll do the best I can with that. So that is correct, now there is only one road entrance. There was a short road entrance, and that's where some wetlands and creek crossings and things like that, that we eliminated that. So it is correct, there's only one at the, what would be the far end closer to Tar River. As I stated, certainly there will be some areas that have to be cleared, there may even be some timber that gets harvested, but there will be within the wetlands areas, within the buffers, within those environmentally protected areas, certainly those areas will be left vegetated. And then any of the open space area, you know, if it did get cleared initially for any timber value, then it would be left in a natural state and, and grow back up. Third question, as far as schedule on when to start, upon approval, we'd be moving forward with construction plans, working through that process. You know, the developer wants to move forward as soon as they can. Realistically, it could be, you know, next spring, when weather breaks with construction moving forward, could be sooner, but, you know, all I can say with that is, as soon as everything get approved and permitted, and developers ready to, to start construction.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for, probably for Mr. Bryant, and that is, does having one entrance on, with 47 lots, does that satisfy our emergency vehicle needs? If we only have one entrance to get in and out of the property?
In this case, the, all the cul-de-sacs would meet the fire apparatus turnaround requirements, and the width of the pavement will be the DOT standards, which would be 20-foot, which would allow two fire apparatus, apparatuses to pass if one was parked on the shoulder. So they would be able to do that, and then interconnectivity for emergency purposes, if another site adjacent to it there is developed, there's a stub out, and that stub out will also have to have a emergency management approved turnaround there, so.
But there's not, there's not a requirement for another outlet, in other words, you could have, you could have only one outlet, and that satisfies the need of emergency vehicles? That's my question.
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we do have a motion on the floor from Ms. Buck for approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Harding. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? So our motion would be to accept the conditional approval by the technical review committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Next on our agenda, envision Pitt County 2045 Steering Committee, as you know, this As you know, this, this board serves as the steering committee for the Envision Pitt County 2045, and tonight, Mr. Gooby, you're going to lead us through that, and I guess Mr. Petrowski's going to also participate.
Yes, I'm actually going to sit down here just a second.
Okay.
Let Mr. Petrowski handle the bulk of this work for the night, but, yes, the board has been designated to serve as the steering committee, and tonight will be your second meeting as that committee to oversee the development of Envision Pitt County 2045. I just want to kind of run through a couple of things real quick before I turn it over to Jake, but we have closed our online survey as of Monday. I'd like to report that we do have over 350 responses that we received from that, so it was a pretty good turnout. There's probably still some paper copies floating around out there as well, so if those come in, we'll certainly include those into the tally as well. Some of our next steps that are coming up, we are working to put together these working groups to help oversee some of this development and to look at some of these more specialized areas of the plan, then begin to develop that draft plan and future land use map, and then at your September meetings, when we're looking at having your third steering committee meeting. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jake Petrowski with Stewart. Jake is the Director of Transportation Planning for Stewart, and he has been kind of serving as our project manager on this, on this effort. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it over to Jake.
Okay.
Good evening, y'all.
Welcome.
Good to see everybody. One clarification, we did do a reorg, I'm the Community Planning, Director of Community Planning, but we're under Transportation and Planning, so that, part of that reorg, right? Yeah. Awesome. We also have Andrea Radford here as well, from Stewart.
Okay.
Just wanted to point that out. Wanted to give you a little bit of update on the project, talk a little bit about the public engagement phase of it, get into a little bit of analysis, and then really end with a discussion on vision and goals. So jumping into project update, just to reiterate kind of what this is, the long-range plan, the comprehensive plan is really a guiding document that's meant to kind of provide policy guidance 10 or 20 years into the future. It provides guidance on lane uses, what kinds of developments should go where, the intensity of that development, also the design of that development in different areas. Also provides guidance for staff and programs and infrastructure. It's collaborative, it's really meant to be a community conversation that occurs periodically, every three or five or seven years, depending on how fast a place is growing or things that are changing in and around the county. It's policy, it's not regulatory, it doesn't immediately change zoning or regulations, it can provide the groundwork for potential updates to regulations in the future, though, so that's important. It talks a lot about lane use and development, but it also talks about other topic areas that influence lane use and development, natural resources, housing, parks and recreation, infrastructure and services, and economic development are some of those things that are also touched in this plan. In general, the schedule, three-phase process, we're in that visioning and plan development phase of the, of the project, that Phase Two, and beginning to draft the plan based on what we've heard so far. More detailed schedule, this kind of shows that the project initiation analysis phase is over, and we've had the public workshops. Now we're talking about vision and goals and recommendations and developing kind of a lane use map and, and other topic area recommendations as well. The public engagement has been a big part of this, and really what we focused on in the last couple of months. We've had one steering committee meeting, this is the second, we've had a lot of stakeholder interviews in person, and also virtual public meetings, the survey, and then also the website. Getting into public engagement a little bit, the website has been a place where we put a lot of different materials, we're keeping all the resources that are generated during the project there. We've had four visioning workshops, we had kind of these stakeholder meetings or topic area meetings that we've had, we're going to begin the working group meetings that are more staff-level technical meetings. The survey was open from April 5th to July 18th, and then we'll have some additional meetings in the fall when we have recommendations. So we're gathering input, really this spring, early summer, that's what we were doing, is gathering input, listening a lot, we're going to draft recommendations, and then we're going to show them to folks and say, are we on the right track? Is this kind of where we want to head? And that'll be in the fall. If you haven't gone to the website, or if anybody listening or watching hasn't gone to the website, please do, it's envisionpittcounty2045.com, and again, that'll be really critical to explain more about the process, but also provide some ways to get involved and resources that are developed along it. A key part of this are the stakeholder interviews, we had a number of meetings with a bunch of different types of folks from all over the county, builders and developers and folks from the real estate side of things, environmental groups and agricultural folks and tourism, parks and recreation folks, schools and health officials, municipal folks, economic development representatives, business groups, utility providers, a lot of those different groups. Some of the key themes we talked about were transportation and kind of what's on the horizon related to that, and economic development, agriculture, you know, how do we continue to support our farms that are critical to the local economy? Water quality and river access came up a lot, and about the Tar River as a, as a asset, but also something that we need to kind of protect a little bit. The airport, all the things going on around the airport, not necessarily expansion of the runway itself, but all the different development going on on the north side of the city, diversity, equity, inclusion as being a need for, that needs to be addressed in this plan. Tourism, parks and recreation, and infrastructure, utilities, we talked about a lot, particularly with Contenia Water Sewer District and the city of Greenville, and there's a lot going on in the water and sewer realm that's going to, affecting development and could drive development in different places in the future. So making sure our lane use policy align with kind of what's happening on the utility side is important. Lane use and development, the design of development, where and what kinds of development are on the horizon, and what we can do to influence that. And food insecurity, a number of other kind of topics as well. The survey, we got this far and wide via social media and also paper copies at different places around the county. We've gotten 355 responses so far, most folks have lived here for quite a while and live here, but a lot of business owners as well, a few folks that travel here frequently. We asked them, what do you value, what are the things that you value in the county? Cost of living was big, farmland and rural character was another one, and access to healthcare, with ECU Health being mentioned a number of times. The top three major issues, unbalanced growth, so growth in one part of the county but not in other parts of the county, loss of farmland, stormwater and flooding were big concerns. What would you like to see in Pitt County over the next 10 to 20 years? We asked that. Protection of farms and open space, managed growth, and utility infrastructure improvements were the top three, and then number four and five were recreation opportunities and transportation improvements. We do have a lot of these open-ended questions, we put the results on the website, if you do want to read through them, there's a lot of really good feedback, people took the time to tell us some of their concerns, and we've put a few on here. But balance, balancing growth, smart growth, specific recreation needs, how to increase opportunities for homeownership, kind of big picture things, where to grow and how to grow, and need to encourage growth in some areas, like Bethel was mentioned, and Grifton, and kind of balancing growth a bit, protection of farms is also mentioned. So top five lane use priorities, we kind of combed through these open-ended questions and summarized them into these themes, parks and recreation, agricultural preservation, open space conservation, affordable housing, and commercial development. Three major development types that people want to see, more agriculture and agritourism, retail and restaurants, and tourism. We asked where should residential growth be encouraged, and we heard away from sensitive environmental resources, away from prime farmlands and where infrastructure exists, so this can influence how we think about future lane use recommendations. We asked what types of residential development do you want to see more of, or if you were looking for a house with a large yard, or large homestead was number one and two, but also houses with smaller yards that are, that are within walking distance, so park or green space were 44% and above, and then low maintenance, some, there's a significant portion, about a third of folks, that are looking for a low maintenance patio home or a townhome, that sort of thing. So that kind of shows what people are looking for when they're searching for homes in Pitt County. We asked about what makes a quality neighborhood, and heard roads and infrastructure, so, you know, the quality of the roads, the connections, adequate road width, that sort of thing, preservation of trees and open space, we heard a lot of comments about, you know, concerns over development, protection of trees and open space, access to trails, greenways or parks was also mentioned. We did ask about parks and recreation priorities because we are considering that as not necessarily traditional infrastructure, but maybe green infrastructure that the different areas of the county need as, as we go forward, a certain quality of life, greenways and trails were mentioned a lot, publicly accessible natural areas, water access and programming and events, the top four. Kind of who responded, all ages, largest age group was 50 to 64, 60% of respondents lived here for over 21 years, so we had a lot of folks that were, that were longtime residents, 17.6% minority and 4.7% Hispanic. We also asked a number of more specific questions at the public meetings, and we really appreciate everybody that was able to come out and participate in those. We asked about what types of residential subdivisions do you want to see more of in Pitt County, because, you know, we are going to continue to grow, but how we accommodate that growth can be different. The same number of homes can be accommodated in different ways, in different types of residential subdivision designs. There was a lot of support for a conservation design style where cluster development away from natural resources, this idea of a farmhouse cluster, so allowing maybe some flexibility in design for some rural subdivisions, but preserving some agriculture, or at least being good neighbors to agriculture. And then conventional subdivisions and large lot subdivisions were less supported, but there's also a place for them in the county. Public meeting had some similar priorities on the parks and recreation side of things, greenways and trails, programming events, but sports fields came up with that. Development priorities, people wanted utility improvements, transportation improvements, and protection of farms and open space. Getting into kind of some of the analysis, and this is just, you know, we provided some statistics and some mapping last time, and we're going to do a few more slides on that, but there is a community profile, it's a larger presentation and more statistics and mapping that is on the website, so I encourage you all, anybody else that is interested, go to that website, envisionpittcounty2045.com, and go to Resources, and there's the full report there that has a lot more in it. But just to kind of orient folks, the study area is all of Pitt County, but we're really focusing on recommendations in the unincorporated area, although we will have some recommendations for partnerships and that sort of thing with municipalities. We were looking at a number of different things, what's on the ground now, what is the kind of existing lane use on the ground, parcel size is something we're looking at to understand where development is concentrated, so this is a parcel size map that shows kind of where those smaller parcels are, really concentrated along some corridors and in the southeast part of the county. We're looking at existing lanes, like I said, before we make recommendations about what's, should go where, it's important to understand what we have on the ground now and how things fit together now, so looking at that. We're looking at parks and recreation, we've talked a lot with Pitt County Community Schools and Recreation Department and understanding what they have going on, and also spoken with folks from Greenville and municipalities, talking about their, their programming and recreation facilities, also some of their priorities that they're looking into long-term. And coordination with schools is important because we do have a number of park facilities, but also there's, there's existing joint use agreements with schools that allow school grounds to be used as parks after hours and when they're not used. And that's a really innovative thing that Pitt County really has spearheaded over the years, to realize that we can't build parks everywhere, but we do have schools in a lot of places, and they function well as park spaces. So that's going to continue to be a way that we address recreation needs moving forward, but we will also have some recommendations in the plan about, about greenways and some areas that are underserved in terms of parks. Agriculture is going to be a big part of this plan, we did show a map previously about the prime farmland and statistics from the agricultural census, but just looking, there's a lot of land in the present use value program in the county, which provides a tax break if those properties stay in agricultural or forestry uses, and that's kind of in the light green. And then 9,000 acres of voluntary agricultural districts as well in the dark green, and those are kind of, it's a voluntary program, but it provides some protections for those areas if, you know, residential development comes in there, you know, it's communicated then that they're in agricultural area and they can't necessarily complain about a use that was, that was already there. So that's a good program, and we'll be looking at some other ways to encourage these programs, but also just encourage protection of agriculture in general in the county. We are looking at some development constraints in the county, just to understand where development is most suited. Hydric soils are prolific in some areas of the county, these are, these are wet soils that are saturated or flood on occasion, these are not the best soils typically for septic tanks and for smaller lot development. So this is a major constraint that we want to kind of utilize when we're making lane use recommendations, and the result of these hydric soils is you'll probably get a lower yield when you do do the soil testing and that sort of thing, you're not going to be as, be able to have so many lots on a property, just because there's going to be some situations where you're not going to be able to use parts of the property like, like the previous subdivision. Other natural resources we're looking at, wetlands, 80,000 acres of wetlands in the county and lots of flood plain as well, along the Tar River, but also some other key tributaries. And they, they're valuable for a lot of different reasons, they provide water quality and flood protection and opportunities for habitat and recreation. We're also looking at other areas that are important, some upland areas, so areas outside the flood plain and outside of the wetlands are really important for biodiversity, those tan areas, some of them correspond with wetlands and some are more upland areas. In addition, you have 13 sites in the county that have been designated as natural heritage natural areas, and those areas are designated because they're some of the best examples of intact habitat and natural communities in, in the state. And those are important to recognize, and some of those are, you know, in constrained areas, but some are not, and a lot of them are on public, public land and some are on private land as well. But how we can encourage development, development pattern that respects those and maybe preserve some of those as open space will be important. So getting into kind of vision and goals, you have a purpose statement, which kind of functions as the vision in the previous, previously adopted comprehensive plan, which I think is pretty good. It's kind of, it sets a vision of protecting public health and reasonable and orderly growth and variety of land uses and sensitive to the environment, and maintains the county's character. I think it's good, but we could, we could obviously adjust it if we need to. I think the other piece of this is goals. In the previous plan, there were a number of goals from growth and development, lane use appearance, community services, and natural environment, and housing, community health, and also some implementation administrative goals. These, we're going to take a look at and work with staff through these, and we might make some adjustments, we might simplify some of them, we might bring in some, some new goals that address some of the priorities that we're hearing from the public. But really, at this point, I, we kind of want to hear from you a little bit, if you kind of think bigger picture and think about some goals that you want to be, be addressed in the plan, each, a lot of these goals will have a set of recommendations to address them, so it could be a big picture goal, but how do we get there is really what this plan is all about. So that's kind of, you know, the presentation, I think that I'd like to, you know, pause and hear from you all a little bit, is there anything- Is there anything that, any goals that, you know, have already been achieved that are less important maybe? What do you think is missing? What is a goal that you have on your mind when you think about the next 10 or 20 years that we really need to be addressing in a forthright manner in this plan and concerted effort towards? So, I'll kind of pause, and if you'll have any kind of discussion, that's pretty much it, and we can kind of go back to that. But really, the next steps are our future land use map, recommendations, steering committee number three, some working group meetings, and then eventually we'll have public meetings, but that's not until we get much further down the road. So, that's pretty much it.
A lot of data, you know, a lot of, a lot of information to work through, obviously, with the survey questions. One thing I was, you know, as a farmer, you know, everybody, a lot of what you heard was people want to preserve farmland. And, I mean, I'm a very big advocate of that, of course, because that's my, that's my passion. But I wonder how many of those people that wanted to do that were actual farmers? Because, you know, farmers don't like to take surveys. I wonder how many of them were actually the ones that filled that out? You know, I see in my profession, when farmland goes away, it's mostly because the farmer retired and didn't have anybody behind him, and that was his kind of last shot to, you know, not even been his retirement was to. But, I mean, I don't advocate for that. I certainly, I certainly love to see the farmland and see it preserved. I know you do, Mr. McGlockhorn, I know you're big on that. So, I certainly think that is, that's an important part. And farming on the north side of the river, you know, I know when you had the informational meetings there, that was probably the most well-attended meeting that you had there. You know, I think, I think those of us on that side of the river are excited about moving things in the right direction. They want some growth, but they want the right kind, I think. And I think that's definitely something we need to keep in mind.
I agree with you 100%. When I built my house, I built it in the country. There's no farmland out there now. None whatsoever. But just soon as the old folks, we call them, died out, their kids sold it all.
I think we need to pay more attention to or upgrade the section on affordable housing. The need has grown exponentially, or just over the past two years. So, I think we need to be more specific there, lest Pitt County become the home, no pun intended to the homeless. Because that population is growing too. So, I think we ought to take some real specific goals in the area of affordable housing.
Yeah, and we did, there was a number of kind of open-ended comments that brought up kind of the need for affordable housing. And even when you talk about values, affordability was a big thing that, you know, people wanted to preserve. And also in the stakeholder interviews, I mean, we did get into talking about affordable housing and the housing market, and, you know, there were some developers that were very clear about, you know, pushing for some flexibility so they could bring some different types of product to Pitt County, particularly when we're talking about, you know, these different types of subdivision design. You know, you can preserve more open space if you allow smaller lots and kind of keep the same density overall, and we did talk a little bit about that, so we might have some recommendations about that. And that's not necessarily affordable housing, but it's kind of like workforce housing. You can get it at a better price point, and, you know, so it might not classify as affordable, but it's still, you know, for your police and firemen and schools and that sort of thing that could accommodate in some ways.
So, if I look at the comprehensive plan that you referred to that was from before, you know, we had goals of growth and development, land use, appearance, community services, natural environment, housing, community health, implementation and administration. So, I guess you're looking for us tonight to say whether we are good with this?
Well, I think what you're telling, just any kind of thing that you think should be a goal, and whether it's in there or not, I think what we're going to do is sit down with staff and look at kind of the themes from the public engagement, and anything you all say, and then we're going to revisit those goals and make some adjustments, and we'll bring those forward at the next meeting, say, hey, this is how we, but you don't have to say that you're good with them right now. I think the things that you're bringing up is perfect, you know, like the farmland piece where we need to, you know, we like preserving farmland, but we also have to provide balance to property rights and that sort of thing. The fact that north of the river, we do want to see some developments, that came up as like a theme encouraging that balanced growth in different places. Affordable housing, maybe we're not as, you know, forthright in our goal about, you know, goals for affordable housing, things like that. So, topic areas, big-picture things, that's what we're looking for tonight.
Yeah. I mean, I definitely think a real push to take advantage of the natural resources we have, whether it's the river or, you know, I mean, it's all about, you know, when you come up with ideas about businesses or things that draw people, you know, it's all about space to do it in and what that right space is. If you work with the land you've got already and the, you know, whether it's on the river or out in the wide open, you know, if you work with those natural resources, I think that certainly leads to people wanting to go there, whether it's to live there or visit there or spend their money there, so.
Yeah. You know, we, that came up a lot, the river especially. And now, it's kind of a, it's a great resource, but it's an underutilized resource. Like, the city is just rediscovering the river, and there's some, there's some ways that we can encourage more, you know, usage of folks that live here, but also visitation and that sort of thing.
If I may comment, one of the things that, I don't know if it's the scope of this board or not, but some of the civil service things need some attention too, I believe, concerning the safety and continued development. As we grow, we need to also grow, make sure our police force and our fire officials are, you know, satisfactorily growing with us, as well as the school systems. There are already burdened now as it is, and something that needs to be addressed, I think, as we move forward.
Right, yep. And I think some of the previous goals addressed it, but really the nuts and bolts of it, like how do you, how do you do that, where we're at, and where we need to be, I think is important.
I do, I do think community health is a, is a big one. You know, we've got a great hospital system here, but if anybody's ever visited there on a busy time, it's, you might spend, you might spend the whole night there waiting to see someone. If you've got some, you know, some outlets there that you can utilize, some community health-type establishments that might, you know, as you grow, kind of take the burden off of that one spot over here at the hospital, maybe that would, I think that's very important too. Obviously, past couple of years, you know, the whole telehealth thing has really, has really boomed, and, you know, that kind of bleeds into that same thing. And of course, you know, the big thing is we need, we need some broadband internet out there. I mean, if we can get that, that will open up a whole slew of opportunities.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate it. So, to lead us into the home stretch, Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I will follow up. A lot of good information on site, on our website for the land use plan. If you did a chance, the view in public as well, if you can go onto that website, you'll learn a lot more about Pitt County and what people are expecting to see. The other thing I'd also like to mention, things that have been discussed tonight, especially about where we want to see the community in the future, it really reminds me of what we'll be going through over the next couple of months with our American Rescue Plan funds. Keep an eye on that. The county has a sizable amount of money that's come through the federal government that will be looking at things like broadband, things concerning public health and public safety. So, if you have some input, if you have ideas, the county will certainly be listening to that and also entertaining possible projects, especially one that was just unveiled at Monday night's commissioners' meeting, a community center north of the river. We've heard about that for a long time, and it looks like that is going to be one of our transformational projects to be considered with the American Rescue Plan funds. So, with that, before I digress any further, the informational items, a lot of these you're familiar with because they came before you for recommendations, not all, but some. So, the first one, your zoning text amendments, remember Eric brought that through last month? That was to allow these special use permits to be handled as conditional zoning districts by the Board of Commissioners. That was approved at the commissioners' Monday night meeting, along with those subdivision ordinance regulations that were changed. Number one, we took out criminal penalties because the legislature told us we had to. And number two, also those off-site septic system easements. Remember Jason had brought those forward to you, and we had a better, what we think is a better configuration for those if they're going in place. And we had worked with our tax office to make sure they were in agreement with some of those changes, as well as environmental health. A couple of other regulations, we pretty much had a full-scale development review session with our Board of Commissioners on Monday night. We had our soil erosion sedimentation control regs. Those have been updated per the state's model ordinance, and remember, we have authority from the state to administer those regulations here. Our Pitt County Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance also amended to follow the model ordinance by the federal government to keep us in good standing, because we need to stay in good standing for anyone that has flood insurance here in Pitt County. In turn, those amendments were adopted on Monday night, and that does bring us up to date with any other requirements. The one rezoning that you dealt with last month also was approved by the board. Remember, that was on 264 East, request to go to industrial zoning along that area. There's some other information in your package. Tab does a good job of collecting several articles throughout the month to provide to you that is related to a lot of the things that you deal with. And it's also, please, go online to envisionpitcounty2045.com. A lot of good information, a lot of good opportunities for input as well. That's all we have for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Before we adjourn, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom Colson from Pitt County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for coming out. Appreciate that. Anything else the board wishes to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to compliment you. You did a great job tonight.
Oh, well, thank you. Appreciate that. Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for coming.